Wiping out that center entry, I think you addressed every issue that they had over there. Other than the fact the building's going up. That one we couldn't change. And again, to address Alderman Wesley's concern, I mean, that was a... On the bigger projects, we did that. We sat with the memory care center, right? We created schedules, we reduced the fees, the water hookup fees. We were as flexible as we can be to bring stuff into town. Unfortunately, this is kind of what you have to do to get the businesses in town. They could say, "We don't want to do the street. You guys do the street." We'd be on the hook for the street and the sewer and stuff, having a different conversation. So it's nice that takes it out of our basket of things to do, puts it on their side. They're liable for it. They take care of it. I think it's a good deal all the way around.
Right, to handle the construction management and everything. Great point. Alderman Sizmarsky?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, we have a motion in a second.
All right.
No, hold on. Wait, you got another question?
No.
Hold on Wesley, go ahead.
I'm in favor of this whole project. My concern is, this is now just being brought to our attention with departments? Because I don't think this was discussed about the rebate like the departments-
Well, I think-
In our past meetings.
Neither was all the training on the streets.
Hold on, hold on. So basically, we need to do the street. That's... That would be our... Our deal. Water, sewer, the side... Those residents are asking for sidewalks and all that stuff. That would be on us. So these guys are going to handle it, handle the management. We don't have to hire anybody. They're already going out to bid. They don't have... We don't have to draw anything. It's done.
Correct.
All right? Go ahead, Mr. Casey.
And just to add very briefly to that, Nippon Express, obviously, who are looking to build a location, they need the road in. It's a key component to their three... New $300,000 headquarters of the Americas. It's a big deal. They came in and met with city staff and essentially made the point that, you know, the road has to go in effectively while the building is being built, which is why it's an advantage to have the developer do it, because obviously, this is a project that would take us some time, obviously, some oversight. The developer is on the hook for the building. The developer is on hook for the road. And the road has to be designed and will be designed to our standards. We will be inspecting it. So it's a little bit different. It's very different from other projects we've done in the past. It's a different approach. But I think where it gets us, it gets us a brand-new facility in the city annexes property, takes care of all the safety concerns that were brought up. And from the city standpoint, we're really essentially just inspecting and accepting.
Chairman, are you ready to take over? We have a motion in a second.
One question.
Unless you have a question yourself? Then roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of a text amendment, special use of major site plan review for the UDO for case number 2019-CDC-12 for an employment agency to be located at 273 East Irving Park Road, Suite B within the TCB zoning district. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Without any questions, roll call, please. Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
For one chief. It's for the chief.
Chief?
I think I brought this up at the last meeting I attended under future agreement or future items. But it's the parking along Catalpa there that's an issue. There's still cars parked there that don't belong there. And they... This certain tenant has already solicited the business of Tom's Axe to rent spots. Well, they shouldn't have to rent spots when there's five spots available to them for business use only, not parking of the cars from an apartment complex, which are broke down and disabled and not tagged. I did see tags on them, knowing that you did do something or someone did something. But we need to follow up on that, because those are business spots. Those aren't... Those aren't spots meant for overflow of apartment complexes who are allowed two spots per person or one spot. These people are going to need those spots. So I don't know what we can do.
Chief?
Sure, we'll follow up on it. I know we did do some work, and there is some... They get a certain amount of days. But we'll follow up on it.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the city and DuPage County for the bike trail maintenance of the Salt Creek Greenway Recreation Trail, Middle Drive to School Street, located at 650 and 750 North Wooddale Road. That would be my motion.
So move.
Any questions? No questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, items to be considered at future meetings. UDO Tesca, December 12, 2019. Recreational Marijuana, December 12, 2019. See, the mayor has his hand up, so I think he has something to add.
Very simple. I actually talked to the manager already, but said it shouldn't be a problem. But our video of Wooddale, "Welcome to Wooddale, come to Wooddale" kind is about eight years old and outdated, and actually, we've stopped showing it. So time to update that video. He says we can probably handle that, but I figure you guys should know.
Mr. Murmurs, you're taking care of this? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think the mayor just wants to show off some new suits or something.
Nice.
All right, yours.
Okay. Anything else to add? Or that's... I would make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. We adjourn.
I'd like to call the audit for the Public Works Committee. Minutetaker, please take note, there's still the same council members present. And I want to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 24, 2019, Public Works Committee meeting. Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation.
What, is that... There was only one aye.
Well, aye. We're with you.
Make sure those microphones are on.
You sure you don't want any changes?
Nope.
So, report and recommendation, a resolution approving agreement with Era Valvia Contractors for the painting and rehabilitation, record station, ground storage, reservoir, and pump house in the amount not to exceed $498,750. There's my motion.
Second.
Any questions?
You're on.
Questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes, motion carries. Next is a report and recommendation... Well, a report from Robinson Engineer regarding the second and third...
Who?
Third and second stormwater project.
I think you said we're getting a discount tonight.
Regarding the two...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, we are here to provide a status update on our major stormwater project that's going to improve things in wards two and three. Just a brief overview of what we're going to discuss this evening. First, construction status on the three projects that have been ongoing here as we close up 2019. And we're going to go through a few of the specifics as it relates to the next phase of the major stormwater project with the northern underground storage, as well as project schedule, the way that it's looking right now, and ultimately, a brief update on the IEP A loan application. As far as construction status, the three projects all have been with the same contractor, with ALAM construction for the... Over the course of the year. Squaw Creek, since we last met, they have completed the fencing and the railings. There are still a handful of punch list items to be completed that they've not yet come out and done. That is where they stand. And we... You may recall that last year, the city succeeded in obtaining a $98,000 grant from DuPage County for stormwater quality. We are anticipating that that, if it hasn't already, should be arriving fairly soon, the reimbursement for that expense. Dalewood Avenue, the major construction is complete, and they also added the complete resurfacing there. But they are still delinquent in getting the parkway restoration done, as well as some... A few punch list items. And on Gilbert Drive, while they've completed the storm sewer and the concrete work, they still need to get out and do pavement patching, as well as the parkway restoration. And just yesterday, I was, you know, I emailed the... All three of the primary people over at ALAM and said, "Look, I need a specific schedule that you can commit to," because, you know, I knew I'd be seeing the council this evening. And here's what they shared with me. I've got this in writing in an email that... And maybe I'll start from the bottom and work my way up on this chart. But they are committed that they're going to be out on Monday, weather permitting, to do the pavement patching on Gilbert. And they're going to follow that up with cleaning up the parkways. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mayor.
When you say seeding and blanket on a November 25th, can they really put that stuff down in the winter and it'll take come springtime?
And really, what was specified when this work should have been done over the regular construction season was for it to be hydroseeded. And the hydroseeding, we don't think is going to work right now. They're going to do this in the interim to just button up the area for the winter and see how it comes through in the spring. And if it hasn't come through well enough, they're going to still have to come back and hydroseed it in the spring. This late in the year, there's... It's the only thing they can do to try and button it up.
Alderman Wesley?
So my question is, are they going to put blanket temporary on it now? So where does it... Where does it stop of being completed for liquidated damage? If they didn't do what the contract stated, hydroseed. So far, I'm concerned, they didn't follow the contract to the T that they signed for. So when they come back for hydroseed, that whole winter days that they miss for hydroseed, do they get... Do we just look the other way on it?
I think ultimately, it depends to see how well the grass would come in in the spring, based on what they're doing right now. I would say the jury would be out until we see how it would come in in the spring.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right. So my follow-up question was going to be, so if they're doing this blanket, I know the hydroseeding is a little more expensive. I was going to ask, so I take it we're going to get a credit? Is that correct?
Yes, there's... They're going to give me pricing for this presumably by tomorrow that we're going to review. But to your point, yes, we do believe it will be less expensive. And we have, you know, until we see those numbers, I'm going to reserve judgment. But you won't pay for both. I will definitely say it that way. We can pay for the lesser one. That's exactly what we'll do.
Alderman Woods?
So if they don't come in tomorrow and start with the asphalt, assuming they get asphalt?
I believe they committed to Monday.
Monday. How much more time do they have before the plants close and they can't get this... The road done?
It's going to be weather-dependent, you know. It's... Different plants are going to make different decisions, yet, you know, 14-day forecast are probably going to dictate that, whether they close. You know, I remember years ago, they often closed by Thanksgiving. The practice the last many years has been really to try to go through mid-December. But with the early freeze that we've had, and, you know, it is supposed to hit the forty... Early... The low 40s in the next few days. I think what it looks like weather-wise will dictate what the plants will do.
Okay. Secondly, in the parkways, when they're going to do the blankets, are they going to... Originally, they were talking about, because none of that's been really leveled or tilled, and so in talking to them before, they were going to do that and rake it and get rid of some of the rocks and clean it up. Are they still doing that?
What they indicated to me is that they're going to... The first thing they're going to do on Monday is go with the pavement patching, and immediately thereafter, they're going to get the park... You're on Gilbert, you're speaking about?
Dalewood.
And Dalewood. They're going to... Yeah, they're going to get it prepped next week with the idea that the landscaper will be in to put the seed and blanket down the week of the 25th.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. And then they intend to get all the punch lists on all three projects to work on all of those together during the month of December. They say they want to get them all closed up by the end of the year. Time will tell. As we move to the major stormwater project... I may have skipped a slide here, excuse me. Maybe not. The prior condition, and I'm going to go through a series of slides just to kind of refresh everyone from where we are. But we all remember that we had that significant rainfall event about 18 months ago on May 30th of 2018. And based on, you know, rainfall recurrence data and so forth, it was always estimated to be between about a 25-year and a 50-year recurrence event when that happened. And what this graphic does is it... And based on, you know, we had great photographic evidence, video evidence of exactly, you know, where the water levels had reached during that event. And as you see at the bottom, we're estimating that elevation on Prospect Avenue, the water elevation got to a little bit over 690, where the ponding depth at the lowest spot, which is near 253 Prospect, was about 28 inches deep. And you could see that it was about 16 inches at Potter Intersection, about 14 at Erman, and about 10 inches at Sarah Drive at its crest. The... I'm going to maybe go to the next slide. So this, again, is a prior condition that we know we have documented that... I want to just keep this as a... Maybe a baseline in our mind as we go through this presentation. Now, based on rainfall data, and as we do design engineering for projects such as these, for stormwater management, the 100-year storm would have had, in this blue outline that you see, the elevation is closer to 691. So it's about 8/10ths of a foot, about 9 inches higher than what the event was 18 months ago. And this is the area of inundation that would occur based on what was viewed as the 100-year storm at that time. So instead of 32 inches, we may have seen as much as 43 inches for a 100-year event at Prospect. Up to 28 at Potter, 22 at Erman, and 13 at Sarah. And again, I'm kind of walking through these just as a reference point for us as we go through what we're going to go through. Now, over the past couple of years, as the city was moving toward getting to the stage that we're in right now, and we had done an extensive hydraulic model based on, you know, various assumptions before the design got to the level that it did today. And we had a concept design last year in September of 18 that we presented to the council, and the decision that the council made was, we were going to move forward with this objective. And that was going to be, you know, there is a... The lowest entry into a home that gets flooded fairly often. It's the lowest elevation on the block in terms of an entry elevation to a home, is at 690.11, okay? What we agreed was that we were going to shoot for a design elevation for the 100-year event at 689, which gave us a little bit more than a 1-foot safety factor. So if the water got up to 689, we'd still have a foot to spare before damage would occur at the lowest home. And what we felt, based on all the data that was available at that time, that we would need about 12 acre-feet of storage on the northern part of the system, and 7 acre-feet of storage on the southern part. And what that design was intended to accomplish... Let's see. There. It would have... It would completely eliminated the ponding at Sarah and Erman. Potter would only be down to about an inch, and at the worst spot, about 15 inches at the low point of Prospect during the 100-year storm. For most other storms, the 10-year, the 25-year, the 50-year storm, this was essentially going to be gone. It was just going to be in that very worst-case scenario, which would be even worse of a storm event that occurred in May of 2018. So that was the premise from which we then... The council then authorized us about a year ago to proceed with the detailed design with these being the design objectives, okay? So where are we now? There's a few things, you know, a few things have... That we feel we need to update you on. All of the rainfall data, you know, there's an old joke that, you know, people... You hear fairly often, the 100-year event, it happens every year, and it feels like it sometimes. And the reality is that from an engineering standpoint, the data that's used to design projects such as these, it's based on historic rainfall data that's collected and, you know, looked at primarily through either IDNR and/or the State Water Survey. Every so often, those state agencies, or sometimes federal agencies, will publish the latest and greatest results of their data crunching, okay? Up until March, in March of this year, the State Water Survey published updated rainfall data. It's the first time they did it in 30 years, you know, since 1989 was the last time. So in March of 2019, they have taken into account all of the additional rain data that they've collected, and it now looks as if the 100-year event, in fact, most events across the board, are now determined to be about 15% higher than what the prior study data had shown. And what's gone on since that time is that the IDNR, as well as DuPage County Stormwater Committee, have indicated their intent that they're going to adopt these new rainfall data, which is going to apply to all development that comes forward. Any type of project that's going to come through is going to have to use this new rainfall data as of January 1st, okay? City of Wooddale, if you may recall, a couple months ago, we did have an updated stormwater ordinance that the county passed that was in accordance with the DuPage County updates. And also, the city's new ordinance now will reflect this new rainfall data after January 1st. So giving you a little more background with this. And just to give you a feel for what the difference is from a data standpoint, the data that everyone's been using the last 30 years indicated for a 24-hour event, a 25-year storm is about 5 and 1/2 inches, a 50-year storm about 6 and 1/2 inches, and a 100-year storm about 7 and 1/2 inches in one day, okay? And what the new data is now showing is each of these have essentially gone up by about an inch, or somewhere between 13 and 17%. And not... While not exactly, what they used to call the 100-year storm at 7.58, they're now calling the 50-year storm at 7.5. What used to be the 50-year at 6.46 is now 6.45, they're calling the 25-year. The 100-year event is now over 8 and 1/2 inches in a 24-hour period. So I'm going through this just so you understand, as we make final design decisions, where we want to be in terms of using old data, using new data, what impact will that have going forward? And so what we have done is updated the city's model to reflect this data, as well as the detailed design of what we have, you know, what we're about to go to bid with here in January. So we've been working to get this done. As we move forward, you know, the remainder of the work, the very first phase, I'll call it maybe Phase Zero based on this, was the work that the city completed over the past year along Squaw Creek and Dalewood and Gilbert. That work is essentially in the rearview mirror, except for some of the restoration.
Except for completing.
Except for completing it, right. But from a stormwater standpoint, it's complete. Now, Phase 1, that we will go forward with here, is the underground storage along Potter and Prospect. It will also include the lift station and bringing a force main to Dalewood. It's going to bring collector sewers from Sarah and Erman intersections to be able to connect to this underground storage. And it's also, and per conversation with city staff, we decided to add the storm sewer in the rear yards of Gilbert to this first phase, to try to move forward and make that improvement. That's somewhat of a standalone element to this, but we're going to try and move forward with that in the coming year as well. Phase 2 is currently planned to be putting additional storage at Westview Elementary School, which is going to be planned for 2021. And Phase 3 will be to take the entire southern underground storage, lift station, force main, and collection system as a third project. So graphically, you've seen this before. It's the exact same that you would have seen at our last update, except that the COMED sewer, which is this red line right here, we essentially moved from this phase to moving it up here. Aaron, going back to the COMED part, have we... Are we sitting down with COMED, if they're going to put some skin into the game? We were scheduled to meet with them yesterday, and they postponed. And so we're hoping to meet with them soon.
What else?
Alderman Jacob?
I was going to ask a similar question. You have contacted them, they know this is happening. They haven't given any written approval yet that we could work in there right away, have they?
Not at this point. We will be submitting for construction permits as the plans are 100% complete here by the end of the year.
Mayor?
So that red line on the south, just north... Right. That's... What is it? That's Brookwood, right? They take it that street off the...
This is Brookwood here, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, right, I've gotten complaints over there. That's... The water flows out of there onto that street and kind of floods that whole section. So that's a section we're going to be taking care of with this, correct?
That is currently the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it just seemed obvious that we do get a lot of complaints in that area, and it's kind of a standalone, so kind of going with the council's theme of immediate relief possibilities, we thought that was some low-hanging fruit for some immediate relief, that red line by COMED.
Go ahead.
So, Aaron, so basically, what we're doing is, I take it we're putting in some kind of storm sewer right at the edge, on the curb, at the dead end, and then hooking it up to the Gilbert, correct?
Yeah.
Or where is that going to hook up to?
It's going to hook up, I believe, to the existing sewer that ultimately comes through here and down to Gilbert. Excuse me, down to Gilbert over here.
Oh, it's not going to come south to Gilbert down that street, right?
I think it's going to come east and connect to the... Jake? There's an existing sewer back here, and it's going to connect to that.
An existing sewer of what, 8 inches or...
No, I believe it's 30, 30 inches.
Is it a 30-inch?
And part of the other... As Jeff mentioned, trying to get to immediate relief, Public Works last year had identified that there is a considerable blockage in an existing pipe. And as part of doing this new sewer, we're also going to make a repair where there are significant tree roots to the point where they could not be removed internally. Public Works had had a contractor out to try to root cut it, and it was just... The roots were too thick, it couldn't be done. So we're going to need to dig down and replace that segment of pipe. We believe that that blockage has also been what's contributing in part to some of the more recent flooding at Sarah... At Sarah, the intersection of Sarah and Prospect, which seems to be more pronounced for smaller storms than it used to be.
Oh, where the volcano comes out.
That's a good description, sure. So again, these are the reasons we wanted to move this up into the coming year.
Go ahead.
So, in terms of our design summary for the hydraulic modeling, you may recall from a prior presentation, we looked at three distinct systems for the underground storage. There was, you know, large concrete chambers that were, you know, were going to require a gigantic crane to come in. There was different factors involved with each one of them, different configurations, different costs, different, you know, availabilities, things like that. Ultimately, we selected the Duralmax underground system for a variety of reasons. One of them, cost. One of them, also, the ability to hopefully construct it in a faster manner than what manner than what the others would have been.
Come here.
All right, you just said cost, but when you were here the last time, I asked you, you told me these were the better pipe, and shelf life on these things was 80 to 90 years. We're still talking about that, right? Because-
Yes, we are.
Because once this thing is paid off, this thing is going to sit for the next 60 years after it's paid off for, well, we're paying it for 20.
To be, to be clear-
We're 60 to 70 years.
The, the estimated-
City's never going to have to worry about that.
The estimated design life of the system will be 75 to 100 years.
Okay.
Yes. Um, in terms of, uh, what we're trying to, excuse me, I'm going to back up one second. What we're doing here now is we're going to be disrupting this entire area along the, from the low point in Prospect, the entire distance of Potter, essentially all the way to the ComEd right of way, and, uh, over to Dalewood, okay? So what we've tried to do, and, and there have been different scenarios in the past about what was Phase One, what was Phase Two, how many acre-feet the first phase, the second, there, you know, there's a, there's a lot of back and forth as we try to maximize and optimize the, the, the most amount of storage that we can fit in this first phase, okay? And what we've determined is that we can get about seven acre-feet, a hair more than that, maybe seven point, seven and a quarter during this first phase, uh, along Potter and Prospect. So we're, that's what we've, that, that's what the, the, the current numbers look, uh, are, are based on, is, is maximizing what we can do in that right away.
Here.
Sorry, Aaron. Sorry. Just so people are understanding, seven acre-feet, when, when you're talking about seven acre-feet of storage, every three acre-feet's about a million gallons, so we're looking at 2.3 million gallons in this phase, for those people that are watching at home who may not know what's seven acre-feet. So just figure every time we've mentioned three acre-feet, that's a million gallons.
Very true. Um, the plan, when we get to Phase Two, presuming we get the intergovernmental agreement done with Westview School or, or School District Seven, which we're going to touch on a little bit later, the plan will also be to maximize the storage volume there during the, the second phase. So, but the way the, the way these things are coming in, the way they're configured, are slightly different than what the concept plan model had looked at a year ago, just, just because of the way things are configured. There's, there's nuances and slight differences. There's also differences in the hydraulic model because of this new rainfall data. So, we've gone through and we've updated everything to a point that, uh, you know, it's really about as updated as it can possibly be now. And, and as I just mentioned, the, what, what this has done is it changes a little bit the expectations on various ponding levels for various storms, because of the extra inch of rain, because of, uh, some of these configuration tweaks. So, where are, and this is the same slide that I just had up a little while ago. This is what our concept design objectives were, were to have 12 acre-feet, seven acre-feet to the south, 689 as a high-water elevation that would result in 15 inches of ponding in the worst-case scenario, with a foot of freeboard, a little more than a foot, uh, before we hit that, that lowest, uh, house elevation. Where we are is in, with all of these new pieces of the puzzle in there, the 50-year storm on today's data, which is about the same as the 100-year of yesteryear, the elevation is about six inches lower, about 688.50. So what that's going to do for the 50-year event, which, again, as recently as eight months ago, we called the 100-year event, we've got the ponding down here at eight inches instead of the 15, but we've had to add a little bit more storage, 14 acre-feet to the north and eight to the south. And that's really where the design sits right now. And the reason that we're sitting here with, instead of 12 and seven, at 14 and eight, two reasons. One, it's to maximize what, we're, we're disrupting the whole construction zone anyway. We wanted to maximize what we can fit in it. And secondly, because, um, because of this additional rain data that's out there, and try to use the, the latest and greatest data, we want to make sure that for the 100-year event, what they're going to call the 100-year event now, that we're getting a little bit closer to what our original objectives are, okay? So, we're recommending that we're going to go with the 14 and eight. Now, with the new ran, the new rainfall data, even with the 14 and the eight, remember, we were trying to shoot for 689 for the 100-year event, we're now at 689.6. So that water level has come up a little bit. That ponding area has increased a little bit if we ever get this eight-and-a-half-inch rain in 24 hours, okay? That lowest point might see up to 23 inches instead of the 15 inches, which was going to be our goal. Over here at Potter, which was going to have an inch, based on the old rainfall data, it's going to have maybe eight inches in the proverbial 100-year storm now. And there would potentially, for the 100-year event, the new 100-year event, still minor backups here at, at Erman and Sarah, which we weren't seeing, I'm going to go back here real quick, at the 50-year event, okay? The 50-year event, by today's data, which is about the 100-year event from yesterday, we weren't seeing this, but now we believe we will, in that worst case, if it happens, okay? So what do we do about this? And, and the other thing that's a factor is, remember, this is our damage elevation, 690.11. We wanted to have a foot or more of what they call freeboard in order to have that safety factor. Our safety factor now is going to be down to about six inches. We're about half a foot below that, based on the, the most updated modeling. We are going with this as our recommended plan, uh, for a variety of reasons. Uh, one is, you know, we, we believe that we're meeting the parameters. The 100-year event, which is significantly higher than the one that you saw 18 months ago, uh, in May of 18, is a very rare, very rare event. And so, knowing that this as-is will be very good for the 50-year event by today's standards, which was the 100-year event for the last 30 years, we feel comfortable with, with this design, and, and even though that freeboard is slightly less. What would it take in order to get this back down to where we wanted it, or where we originally desired it, 689, to get that full foot of freeboard, to get that ponding down to 15 inches? We would need 18 acre-feet to the north, you know, so that difference to go from 14 to 18 is probably another five or six million dollars, and we don't feel that that is, you know, we don't feel that we should be recommending that at this time. Now, after everything gets built, and if, if all of a sudden they change the data 10 or 15 years from now, and now the, you know, now they're saying, hey, this is going to be happening more often with climate change, or whatever the, whatever the reasons are, well, the city would always have an option in the future to add more storage, and we are going to, as part of this design, include stubs, so that if we would want to add storage in the future, the city will retain that option. But we are not recommending to go to 18 acre-feet at this time. Uh, but I just wanted to, is everyone clear on, on your, kind of how I've walked through this? I want to make sure that, you know-
Crystal.
(laugh) Um, I just want to make sure that because it's a little bit different than what we were anticipating a year ago, that we understand the reasons why, and that, you know, we're going to be okay with getting to the point of going out to bids, which is coming up here in the next 90 days or, or thereabouts, okay? You've seen this graphic before as well, this photo, uh, and this is really that Duralmax system. These pipes, I don't know that they are in this particular case, but these are going to be 10-foot diameter pipes, um, that are going to be installed. And I, and I want to touch base with a little bit, so you understand what this system is going to look like, and how massive this construction project is really going to be, and how impactful it's going to be on the residents that are adjacent to, to where we're building this. This is going to be the typical cross-section along Potter Street. So, if you can vision the whole way of, of Potter between Prospect and the ComEd right-of-way, there will be a couple gaps because of utility crossings and things along those lines, but most of Potter will have a 10-foot diameter pipe, as well as two 9-foot diameter pipes that will be constructed. And there will be, you know, this is all going to be struck, it's structurally designed to the point where this is all, uh, going to be one solid structure going forward. There'll be a flowable fill that is poured above this bottom pipe. This will all be stoned, and, you know, it, it will be a structure. There will be five feet of cover between the road and the top of the pipes.
Here.
Sorry, Aaron, what'd you say, flowable fill?
Flowable fill. It is a, it's a, a backfill, um, material that starts, it's almost like a, like a lightweight concrete, that ultimately you pour into the, into the trench, and then it, it hardens-
Really?
And it gives a hard surface, right?
Okay, I never heard that term before.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, a couple questions.
Peter.
How deep are the, the pipe on the bottom? How deep is that?
What an excellent question. Watch this.[1149.62][1149.62](laughter) It's going to be between 27 and 32 feet deep. Uh, so this is a major excavation. This is going to be over 40,000 cubic yards of material being excavated. Uh, that is a massive amount of material. The bottom of that trench is estimated to be about 16 feet wide. Remember, this pipe is 10 feet, and we're going to have about three feet on either side of it to build this structure of stone and, and backfill and so forth. So this is going to be a massive excavation, and when we dig that deep, you know, it's going to be-
We hit oil?
Excuse me?
We hit oil?
Well, that's the thing. We're going to hit water, unfortunately, and that's the next little graphic here, is the soil borings. You may recall that we reported this beginning of this year, that especially to the west, closer to Prospect Avenue, the groundwater table is extremely high, um, to the point where maybe only four or five feet deep. The, it, it, it tapers off a little bit, but you're going to hit it be like 12 or 14 feet deep as we get closer to the ComEd right of way. So groundwater is going to be an extreme challenge for the contractor as they build this, and this is one of the factors that's going into the costs of, of, of why this system is, is not, not easily constructed. So there's going to be a lot of impacts and challenges, and I, I want to make sure that the council is aware, and, and that ultimately the residents in the area are going to be aware of some of these things. You know, the, I've, I've got this yellow box here, you know, this is the primary area during this first phase that's proposed to be built in 2020. You know, it's probably, and, and I say here, for 18 to 24 months, and that's because when we look at this first phase in 2020, and if the second phase, presuming we get the IPA loan approved, and the school, we build the, the second phase the following year, from the resident's standpoint, it's going to be almost a continuous process, and we believe that together, these are going to be 18 to 24 months to get everything done, um, in this corridor. Even when we're working at the school in the second phase, there's still going to be trucks coming in and out with material and, uh, you know, removing excavated material, hauling in stone. It's going to be a construction zone for the better part of, of two years. Uh, so I want to make sure everyone is aware of that. There's significantly large equipment that needs to be out there in order to be able to dig 30 feet deep. Uh, there's, I mean, these are going to be taking up big space, they're going to be loud and noisy, and, uh, it's, it's going to be major construction, not just your typical, you know, what you saw sand Dalewood and Gil- Gilbert this year.
Uh, Mr. Hermos, so what does the city have planned as far as notifying the, the residents when the time comes? I mean, we're going to have an, an ongoing notification? Go ahead.
Yeah, as part of this project, we're probably going to have a specialized outreach plan, since it's such a massive project, and that's obviously still under development. So it wouldn't be our simple normal plan, it would be our plan on steroids, which is still under development.
And I, I'm going to touch on that at the very end of the presentation as well.
Go ahead.
Um, so, as I mentioned, trucks are going to be coming in, in and out, uh, from the construction site, hauling dirt, bringing in stone, uh, dust is going to be a, a norm, you know, we're going to need to be staying on the contractor for dust watering and things of that, that nature, because of the high groundwater that's been identified. There's, the de-watering is probably going to be a 24-hour operation. You know, they're, more likely than not, the contractor's going to have to install well points and have those things checked periodically, even through the night. These large diameter pipes, nine and foot, nine and 10-foot diameter, they're going to need to bring these pipes to the site. They're going to need to store these things above ground for a period of time before they install them into the, into the trench. So the, again, just trying to give you a, a visual of what this area is going to look like. As the system gets built, it's generally going to, it's generally going to go from east to west, okay? Because east is where the downstream end will be, and they'll, they'll go from downstream to upstream. But at any given moment, because of the size and the depth of the trench, the length of the pipes, the size of the equipment, there's probably going to be about a 200, at least a 200-foot stretch of road that is completely closed to traffic. So, for the better part of 2020, there will not be through traffic on Potter Street, okay? We are, you know, we're coming up with a, a more detailed plan as to how we're going to still maintain access to all those parking lots during construction, but there will be no through traffic on Potter during the bulk of this project, okay? Um, and again, 200 feet or so will be closed completely. As they move forward, that 200-foot segment, you know, to build essentially three large diameter pipes, all the excavation, all the backfill, we're estimating that somewhere between two and four weeks, each of the driveway accesses, for the parking lots at Georgetown and for, uh, to the south at Orchard Lakes, there's one, uh, home, it's a, it's a duplex that has an, an individual driveway right at, right at Potter. As this is going through, those are probably going to be inaccessible for somewhere between two and four weeks at a time, and we're going to be proposing to put temporary driveways in temporary easements in order to get people in and out, and I'm going to, I'm going to discuss that a little bit later. Impacts to school buses, to mail, to garbage trucks, all these things are going to need to be, it's going to be going on for a year, uh, without a doubt. Motorists are going to be inconvenienced. Pedestrian traffic may be challenging. You know, we believe that we're going to be able to save the sidewalks when the, when these excavations occur. But with the groundwater and the ground conditions, you know, there's no guarantees. But nonetheless, even with the sidewalks there, it's going to be awfully close to a very large and dangerous construction site. Resident communications will obviously be paramount, as well as with emergency services and things along those lines. And this is part of what we'll be working together with city staff on over these next couple of months, to make sure that we've got a, a very proactive plan in place even before we put this project out to bid. So that's, that's really something that we'll be working on here in these next 60 days or so, okay?
Mr. Chairman, looks like a question?
Yeah, we're, we're talking, I mean, we're going to be digging 27 to 30 feet, and I'm, I'm guessing we're not going to have that put in and filled in the same day, so I'm guessing there's going to be big holes open like that. How are we going to prevent, uh, people, like kids and things, from going there? I mean-
There'll, there'll be construction fencing around the whole site for sure. The contractors aren't going to want the kids getting access to their equipment either. Uh, it, it would be the contractor's responsibility to secure the work site every single day. What this basically shows is just kind of a highlight of, there's going to be along Potter here, there are eight primary driveways, seven along Potter, one at Prospect, that where there are going to be multiple property owners that require this access point to Potter. And as I was saying earlier, that two-to-four week period, when, when the equipment and the pipe is being built right in front of these driveways, it's going to be a challenge to get these folks in and out. We do believe we have a workaround, and I, and I will share with you that originally we were thinking that perhaps we could work with ComEd to construct a temporary parking lot, uh, near where the existing one is off of Station Drive. And based on communications with, um, them over the past week, we realized that it might be just as challenging as the roadblocks that we hit two years ago, uh, when we were trying to build the storage in ComEd. So we've looked at a different alternate, and I, I, um, I was in contact with the, uh, president of the Georgetown Improvement Homeowners Association, Georgetown West Improvement Association. We have a meeting scheduled, we couldn't get schedules to work next week, but we've got a meeting scheduled for December 5th, and we're going to be presenting all of our plans to them in terms of how we're going to be able to maintain, uh, access to those parking lots while this happens. Um, I'm going, I'm not going to go into too much detail here this evening, but it's going to require the association to provide temporary easements for us, uh, and there's actually one or two permanent easements, just because of, uh, locations of pipes and things along those lines. So, uh, we're going to go, uh, meet with them, and the next, next time we come back to you, we'll have, probably have easement, uh, agreements for you to, to consider.
Aaron, so with moving all these cars, you're trying to, are we going to like, give each, each one of these residents like a number, a parking stall number, so we don't have people just all of a sudden using these extra spots or signing something, right? Because otherwise-
That's probably a great-
There's going to be some fisticuffs over there and-
It's probably a great conversation to have with the homeowners association, for sure.
Otherwise, the chief is going to be very busy over there.
Hold on, Jacob.
When that street's closed, how is police, fire, how are they going to get in to Georgetown if something happens there?
Well, and the, the plan will be to limit the complete street closure to that roughly 200-foot at a time, so that there will be access on both sides of where the construction activity is, and there's going to need to be a temporary driveway in order to get into an individual parking lot. So, I just, you, you see over here to the right, right next to the number two, this driveway here is the one that goes south, and this is that really big, there, there's a lot of parking stalls back here, a lot of units on, on this eastern portion of, of Orchard Lakes over here. This is the only exit for hundreds, a couple hundred vehicles, I think it is, okay? What we plan to do, this is the public worksite here, where the lift station is going to be constructed, but what we plan to do is construct a temporary driveway- be constructed, but what we plan to do is construct a temporary driveway onto the city's property that all of these property owners can access while the construction is going on in front of their driveway, okay? And this model is what we're looking to speak about with Georgetown, about doing the same type of thing, where maybe if we can get an easement on the backside of the sidewalk and construct a temporary driveway that would basically go along the sidewalk, maybe all the way till the next driveway, while the construction is here, these folks can use this temporary drive and then get out this way and get back in this, and, and just keep kinda moving it along as we go, uh, along those lines. So that's, that's really what our meeting on December fifth will be with the association for.
Alderman Serantino?
When you meet, you said it's December fifth?
Correct.
Is it the board only, or the association?
I, I believe we're meeting with, I believe it's with the, with the president of the board and the finance director.
Those two for this whole project?
Well, I think, just an initial meeting to introduce them to it, and she, she mentioned that there'd be a possibility that they would take it to their board, uh, they've got a meeting December eighteenth, I believe it was.
Okay. Are those considered executive sessions, or could an alderman be present, or two?
I don't believe they're considered executive sessions.
Let her know that we'll be there, December fifth and the eighteenth. Tony and I, or one of the other, maybe Art Woods too.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will keep you informed.
Super.
Alderman Woods, you had a question?
Forget it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, there's a, a, a series of easements that we're gonna need to get completed here. One of them will be with Georgetown, uh, that I was basically just talking about. Um, on the south side, we, we envision that we're gonna need a couple here. Uh, this is at Claire Court, uh, where this is basically a cul-de-sac with numerous, numerous residents here. We believe we're gonna need to have, uh, one that comes this way, and then there's this one unit here that's, it's, it's a duplex. We believe we can get them over this way. There's not major obstacles, as long as the property owners are, are willing to grant us a twenty foot temporary easement. We would probably just put stone driveways down and then remove it all and replant the grass, uh, after the construction is complete. So that's, that's the general plan, to make sure that everyone can keep parking at their own, uh, current facility.
Alderman Jacob?
Maybe one of the aldermen could answer this, but on the top, at the end of the parking lot?
Up here?
What, what is behind, like, if you went further up, what's back there?
Uh, there's, there's the courtyard, and there's, there's buildings up here.
Where the pool is.
Okay.
There's townhomes.
Okay.
Uh, there's not room to build a temporary drive.
Okay, well, that's what I was looking at.
No, some of the buildings, some of these buildings are pretty tight together up here.
Okay, I was just looking, looked like it, you could possibly put a temporary drive in there.
And it's people's front doors.
That too. Right. Um, now this is the school property, um, and we're showing, what we've, what we uncovered is we did some of the property research, as we, we looked at the, you know, the easement that we're gonna, we would work with, with School District Seven, is that the school actually owns to the center line of Potter Street. Uh, there's no formal right-of-way dedication along here, nor is there on Addison. Addison's a county road, we're not, that's really not of our, none of our problem or business right now, so we're gonna not worry about it. But we did talk with a few of the, the school board people, uh, just on Monday evening at a meeting about, you know, the idea, we were originally looking at an easement, but maybe they would even dedicate thirty-three feet of right-of-way all along Potter, just to kinda clean that up for the city's future roadway maintenance and, and things along those lines. But what, at the bare minimum, with this first phase of the project, what we'd like to be able to do is at least get, in this area, a permanent dedication for that thirty-three feet, and then a temporary easement for us to be able to utilize a portion of their parking lot for part of the construction. And I'm gonna just flip over to here, that, as it looks like this on the aerial. This is Dalewood here, uh, and that's the sewer that we'll ultimately connect to. As we would put the storage facility in this area to the west, there's a segment that we'd like to be able to put a stub and a structure here in the parkway, so that the following year, when we would come back and build the, the storage in the school lot, we wouldn't necessarily have to rip up the road again. And so in order to do that, we believe that to build this, we're probably gonna need to put equipment here in, in order to install this. So it's a temporary easement, and, and so we, um, we at least presented that on, in an, an initial basis to members from the school board the other night.
Alderman, uh...
I, I, I have one question. So staging the equipment, so when, so when school opens, is all that equipment gonna be out?
Oh, yes, yeah, in fact, we, we, we committed that this work would be done over the summer month when there's not, uh, the kids are not in school. Yeah, that, this is a relatively small amount of work, and this is the part, it'd be very easy to control the schedule to make sure that they, they did this in June or July.
Because it's...
Go ahead.
So, and then to dig the piping on soccer field, is that part of this whole phase in one, one choice?
Not this phase, it would be the second phase that, after we get the I E P A loan.
Okay.
In fact...
So the first phase, so the first phase, we're gonna dig...
That's, this is what that would look like.
All right, so we're gonna dig up the parking lot, the first phase. Well, this is the next phase.
I, I, I would say that maybe not so much, ma- maybe dig a little piece of it right here, just in order to get this installed, but not much, this first phase. In the second phase, now, now we're looking, um, north is to the right, this is Dalewood over here. This is, uh, now this is not a detailed design by any stretch yet, we've not even done field survey on the school at this point, but this is conceptually what the storage in the school would look like. We believe we can fit seven acre feet of storage at this location. These would be about nine ten-foot diameter pipes, all laid in parallel, okay? And ultimately, they would all be connected to a header pipe at this end on the south end, and they would come, but this one right here, the second one, is actually pointing or, uh, sloped back toward the street. This is that stub that we would build, uh, next summer, and then it would come back to the lift station and then come out on a force main to, to Dalewood, okay? Uh, we did show this drawing to the school board the other evening, and, uh, they, I, I think, I'm gonna touch on this as we, as we go forward, but it does appear that, you know, they, they are gonna consider, uh, this topic at their next meeting on the twenty-first. Um, and basically, you know, uh, between city staff, in fact, the mayor was there the other night, along with, uh, Allen and, and so forth, we, um, uh, Mr. Chairman was there as well, um, that, th- they're positively predisposed, it looks like at this point, to be working together with the city to develop a, an intergovernmental agreement. Um, and that's really what, what they had indicated by phone, uh, to the city manager after we met, was that they're gonna bring this up at their meeting on the twenty-first with basically, uh, to take a vote about entering into an I G A, uh, with the city. Uh, they would like the city attorney to draft that agreement, and, and we would look to present that to them, you know, presumably in the next month or two. Uh, in return for the, the school's cooperation, they, now, we're gonna, obviously, I'm gonna go back one second. Obviously, when we build this system, we're gonna be destroying two-thirds of this parking lot, okay? And with construction traffic and everything else, it's, it's a foregone conclusion that we would build their, rebuild their lot, and probably even at least resurface the entire lot so that it all looked right when we were done and, and restripe it and everything. What this, what the school district has asked is, you know, not only in terms of repaving the, the west lot, but could the city, as part of our project, connect the two parking lots in order to add a few more stalls in return for, you know, basically they're foregoing the opportunity to expand their, their building over this way. City staff has reviewed this request, we find it to be reasonable. The other thing is we find it to be a, um, an insurance policy, a minor insurance policy, if, to, to Alderman Wesley's point earlier about next year, when we build, a, a year and a half from now, when we would build the storage here, there's a very tight timeframe, um, eleven, maybe twelve weeks at the most, to get a lot of work done, a lot of earth moved, a lot of pipes built, and if, for whatever reason, we get two weeks of monsoon weather over the summer, it could really, really be an impact. You know, we believe that even to get it done on ideal conditions, it may be, you know, twelve-hour days, six or seven days a week for a contractor to get, or multiple crews, whatever it might take, in order to meet a very strict schedule. But in that worst-case scenario, that, you know, maybe we would get all that heavy equipment out of there, but for whatever reason, they're not a hundred percent done with paving the parking lot by the time the school year starts, right? At least if this was constructed in advance, it would provide additional parking while we were still buttoning this up, i- in that worst-case scenario. So we, we believe it's a reasonable request, um, at the staff level, uh, but we wanted to make sure you were aware of it as we would develop the I G A.
Mayor?
Sorry, Aaron, but how many, you didn't think you were gonna get this done in three months, this section? Is that correct?
Uh, the goal is to get this done in eleven or twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks, okay, so I'm just, because I'm just, just thinking, so if we were able to start, you know, the last couple weeks of school, just to get a head start, we're only on the grass, start on the grass area, I, I, again, the school would have to accept, just to get us, just in case we have another great, like we had this year with the rain, never gonna happen.
That, that's exactly right, no, those are certainly details that we're gonna be in communication with the school district as we would develop this I G A.
Okay.
Alderman Smoski?
So pending their approval of... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you, you touched on one thing with the depth of the project before that, with the three pipes. What is the depth of this project going into that? Are you gonna come across water on that too?
That's a very excellent question, actually, because the good news here is that at the school, we're not gonna be thirty-two feet deep. We're gonna be closer to maybe eighteen feet, somewhere in that range. Um, it, the, the, that, that property does slope down to the south, and so it's probably be a little bit deeper in the parking lot, a little bit shallower toward the, the south end of the property, um, but with five feet of cover on top of those pipes, we're gonna be sixteen, eighteen, nineteen feet, not twenty-seven to thirty-two feet. So that's, that's a good thing. Um, what, the second part of your question was, Alderman?
No, I was talking about the water level.
Oh, the water level, yeah.
The water level, Ed, you said we were gonna come across...
One of, one of the things that we would like to do as part of the design is get soil borings. Uh, I don't have an assessment of what the water table is there at this time.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, since we brought up those properties, as you're doing that project, and you're going all the way to the back end of those other properties over time, I've, over the years, I've gotten some complaints of water issues rolling out of that field.
Mm-hmm.
Will this have any negative or positive impact on the existing condition?
It should not have any negative whatsoever, and if we find the, and, and I, I can imagine where there probably is some sheet flow...
Right.
That comes from north to south there, we probably could collect some of that water, you know, similar to what we're proposing to collect on the south end of the ComEd right away, near Gilbert. We could probably put a couple of open grates and connect that to the system down there, if, if, I, 'cause I don't think any exists down there now.
Yeah, when, when you get further down the granite hole here, if you could look into that.
That's, that's next year's design project, we're trying to make sure we get this first one out now, right now. So, in terms of schedule, uh, you know, where we are right now, our plans and specs are about ninety percent complete, okay? Uh, we wanted to make sure that we had this, this update for the council, make sure everyone's comfortable with the direction we're going forward, and now there's a, there's something that's probably worth a highlight there. The, the work that we're talking about to come all the way, uh, along Potter, up and basically until the school property, till Dalewood, we're at a number right now of about twelve million, and, and I'm gonna come back to that, that's why I've got that asterisk there, because I think it's worthy of a discussion after I kinda walk through a couple of these simpler items, if that's okay, all right? We believe that we're ready to go, presuming that we've got the easement agreements, if, if not a hundred percent signed, you know, very confident that we're ready to sign those, we believe we're ready to go to bids sometime in late, at least advertise for bids in late January. I do believe that the pro, the nature of this project, and that the, especially, you know, not just the technical issues and the construction issues, but the, the public, you know, the, the, the resident issues, probably gonna warrant a pre-bid meeting that we would wanna have with interested bidders, you know, a couple of weeks before the bids are due, and so that we lay everything out and everyone understands, you know, this is not a cookie cutter job, it's, it's really a custom type of a project, it's not what, you know, there's not a lot of data even in terms of trying to estimate the cost right now. But we believe that that extra step will be warranted, so we might, you know, we're not gonna advertise and then maybe get bids two or three weeks later, we may wanna have a four or five-week bid period and actually accept the bids maybe toward end of February, first week in March, to the point where we can award a contract if, if warranted at that point in, in March. That's what we're thinking right now, we'll refine that again as, as we get a little closer.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes, I mean, you had said this is kind of a custom project, so are there contractors in this area that could handle a project like this, or are you gonna have to reach out to out-of-state contractors as well?
Well, we're, we're, we're actually working with a couple contractors right now, just to give us a little bit of preliminary review on costs and some of the constructability issues and, and, you know, really trying to estimate how much time these things are gonna take. And so there are contractors in the area, and, and when I say the area, certainly in the Chicagoland area, that are capable of doing this, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, so we would envision construction starting in the spring, and probably lasting all the way till the following spring, you know, between the, what, well, I mentioned earlier about six to nine months, probably along Potter Street, we've also got that lift station to be built, and the lift station itself is gonna, most lift stations take about a year, because you've got a long lead time on equipment and things, and testing and, at the end, and all this type of stuff. So we believe that realistically, we might award a contract this March, and it may not be completely buttoned up until May or June of, of 2021, which is right around that time when we would presumably be starting the Phase Two work over at the school. So that's why I mentioned at the top, that it's really gonna be a continuous two-year project, it would, it would appear, you know, at, at least in, in the eyes of the residents. It might be, end up being two different contractors, but it's, it's really gonna be a two-year process as we go through this. Um, I think I touched on all these issues, uh, earlier, so I'm not gonna repeat them. I do wanna go back so that everybody understands, and, and residents may, may be interested in this as well. This very first phase of where we get this seven acre feet, or seven and a quarter acre feet, what will that look like? And this is that slide that, that we sho- showed earlier, where that worst-case scenario, the hundred-year storm, we might end up with forty-three inches over here at, at Prospect, twenty-eight at Potter. After we get this done, just the first phase, okay, seven acre feet to the north, zero to the south, this would be the impact we would see right off the bat, that, let me get these inches up here, that forty-three inch would be reduced by about twenty inches, twenty-one inches, just with this first phase, where Potter, you saw, was just at twenty-eight, we believe it'd be down to about seven. Fourteen and twelve at Erman and Sarah. So it, while this is not the end with just the first project, it does already provide a significant impact to what the future fifty-year storm will be, okay? This would be about the hundred-year storm of a year ago. That's seven and a half inches in twenty-four hours, this would be the impact, this would be the footprint of the flooding as opposed to this, okay? We would have a, but we'd be about six inches below that damage elevation at the lowest house on, on Prospect. So this first phase is gonna have a lot of impact, it's not gonna solve everything, but it's gonna have a meaningful impact. For the hundred-year event, based on the new rainfall data, it would have this type of a, a footprint with maybe thirty-two inches at the worst point, seventeen at Potter, fifteen and twelve. Again, that's why the second phase and ultimately the third phase are gonna be needed to bring that water level down for all of these areas, okay? But understand that this first phase is gonna have a meaningful impact, especially for those ten-year storms and twenty-five-year storms that are of lesser magnitude than the, than the giant ones. I mentioned earlier, you know, I know that the, when we, when we met last time, we were looking at this first phase in a, in a, in a number of around nine million dollars, uh, that we were gonna look to maybe a bond issue. And there were, there was different things going on. If you remember, we originally were gonna do the school first, where we thought it was gonna be, you know, just the school, and then the council, I think, very astutely decided, let's do this first 'cause of, 'cause of the immediate impact. As I, I am sensitive, knowing that, you know, we've got the bond issue, and we ultimately have the, the low-interest loan that might be a more advantageous interest rate and things like that, too. There is a way that we figured out, um, the way that the storage is gonna go, we're gonna have about one acre foot along Prospect, we're gonna have about a, a little under five acre feet... five acre feet on the west side of ComEd on Potter, and there's going to be about 1.8 acre feet between the ComEd right-of-way and Dalewood, okay? What we could do is, if the city preferred to get that bond issue number back down to the nine, nine-and-a-half range, we believe that this portion could be deferred and combined with the work that we do at the school, so it could be covered by the IEPA loan a year, a year later. We would still need to build the force main over to Dalewood, but this portion could potentially be delayed until the following year and be funded through the IEPA loan instead of the bond issue, if that was an important factor to the city. So, that 12 is there based on everything that you see, but this could easily be shifted over there, and it would, it would move about $2.5 million to the, to the loan.
That 1.8 acre feet, does that include that stub that you were also talking about?
It would, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that this year, if that were the case.
But the problem is, then, it's going to take longer to finish that next project than the school property, which would make me a little more nervous.
Well, I, I, I think the portion that would be done on the school property, it would be almost the exact same, it's just that we would have this extra work to do on Potter in addition to it the following year.
But then, so, we're going to have all these residents, they're going to endure this stuff all year, all next summer and whatnot, and then, and then again, we're going to have to block off Potter again a second time.
That is true.
Which is, would probably irritate quite a few of them.
That's a good point.
Right, but you know what? If we get that, we get that seven acres hooked up, it's going to help right off the bat. Instead, we're only going to do five acre feet, those numbers that we saw a little while ago are going to go up again, and I, I just feel that the residents are going to be more irritated, because it's just going to be more problems on Potter, where this, that second phase of this, of this northern, it'd be in the school grass, and it'd be off the street for them, there'll be truck traffic, but the street will be open.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Alderman Wesley?
I'm not in favor of delaying that area of 1.8. I'd rather get done, I mean, so, that's, that's the instinct that I have.
Alderman Woods?
So, the loop there with the seven-plus acre feet of storage, on Monday it rains, that fills up, where's that water go until it's hooked up to a force main?
Well, well, no, we would still build the lift station in the force main under this modified option.
Okay.
That would still be there. The other thing, and, and the reason we wanted to, you know, our initial design was to build all of this at once on Potter, the road closure is actually a great point as it affects the residents, but from a construction standpoint, we would need to build the force main no matter what. It's advantageous to build the deep elements of the project and then build the force main on top of it, as opposed to just building the force main and then having to deal with it while they're building the, the deeper stuff, say, a year later, you know? So, there are advantages, as long as the $12 million number works on a bond issue.
Go ahead.
So, when you get this completed, this section's functioning and pumping down Dalewood?
Absolutely right.
Squaw Creek. Mayor?
Okay. So, the lift station is actually in front of our booster station over there, so that's where you're putting that temporary drive, so I take it, is that section to the west from the lift station going to be first, while you get the tempor, and then, then you're going to put in the, the lift station right after?
Yeah, and I don't have a blown-up photo of the lift station site, but there's actually two driveway, there's, it's like a circular drive here.
Right.
We would probably pull that temporary drive to the westernmost one and re, you know, not have the, not have that traffic get so close to where the lift station construction is going on.
Okay, I just.
Alderman Jacob?
With, with the, all the construction going on, I'm assuming at times, once you're under, and hitting like underground utilities, that there's going to be times where you're going to have to shut the water off for hours at a time, or possibly even the electric with the utilities?
There's actually, there's actually, as part of this, there's going to be a couple areas where we've got to relocate some water mains, we're going to have to replace a couple sanitary sewer segments and things like that, very astute, there are utility adjustments that will be needed. In terms of water shut-offs and things like that, there are ways to minimize those, that I'm not as concerned about water shut-offs.
Go ahead.
A real quick update on the, on the IEPA loan. The facilities plan that the council authorized last time we, we got together is about 80% complete. We do anticipate our, our submittal to IEPA next month. We did want to verify the council's pleasure in terms of how we will phase this segment between, you know, the lift station and Dalewood, because we want to put that properly into the, into the final draft. We would also anticipate being before the council in early 2020, there's a few standard resolutions that require council action for the IEPA loan, you've been through them before. There's two or three resolutions that we would be bringing in the first quarter of, of 2020. And then, you know, ultimately, the loan would be envisioned to cover Phase Two and Phase Three.
Mayor?
Sorry, Aaron, I just thought about something, and this is probably a question for Brad. So, that 1.8 acre feet, so if we go out to bid with this full project and we make that an option, just so we can wait for the loan, would that, would that work? Or is that still not allowed?
I, I, I don't think we could do it that way. We'd have to include it in the loan documents that go out to bid, but what we could do, if you, if, if it was close with the numbers.
No, because what I'm saying is, so, you're telling me how long it's going to take, right? So, by that time, we have the option, and basically then, that piece gets awarded at the end, right? Once we get the IP loan, we can, no, or, that gets too complicated.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, and we might be able to kind of look at it both ways, it, but it might also be complicated from a construction standpoint, because odds are, if it's in the initial project, they're going to start on the east end, and they would want to build that part first, the part that's closest to Dalewood.
I guess we're going to need a consensus. I would be for taking care of that street once.
Okay, go ahead.
Take care of it.
Go ahead.
We would approve, we were, what we anticipate with the next phase that would deal with the IEPA loan is that the, we'd anticipate getting a loan approved somewhere next winter, roughly a year, 12 to 15 months from now. Getting the facilities plan submitted, getting it approved most likely in the spring, having all the loan applications submitted by that time, there will ultimately need to be a public hearing, as with all IEPA loans, if that was to take place over the summer months, and then, we would then get the, the approval on the plans and specs for that next phase. I would anticipate a bid opening for that somewhere maybe late fall of next year, with the goal of trying to get the loan actually closed by January of, of '21. We really want to be, you know, cognizant of, of meeting that schedule, because we really want to get that contractor in place several months before the summer, to make darn sure that everything is like clockwork with the work that we would do at, at Westview, at the school. So, that's, that's what we're, we're really shooting to do. We don't want to have a bid opening in May and expect that the contractor's going to get that work done over the summer. We really have to get that work, you know, awarded at least by, you know, January, February of '21. So, that, that's kind of what we're thinking about in the, in the intermediate term as we go out. And then, as you know, you know, we, we haven't put a, a lot of detailed time yet into the southern option, not option, but the southern component of the overall project. That's always been envisioned to take place in '22, '23, right around there. That's something that we'll probably start looking at here as, as we get these projects underway, of, we need to get a more detailed analysis. Where is the storage going to go? Is there, are there parcels that we may be able to use for, to put a lift station? Those are conversations that will be, you know, starting no rush at this meeting or, or in the, in the immediate future, but it's something that we'll want to be looking at as 2020 approach, or as 2020 unfolds. So, in terms of next steps, this is the last slide, I promise. Oh, is there a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, like, right now, I mean, what kind of safeguards are we going to put in there? Like, we have a small project going on right now, and the contractor's not finishing the work, and everything has to work like clockwork for this to get done, so what kind of safeguards are we putting in the bid documents or something to protect the city and make sure everything does get done like clockwork here?
I think there's going to be, there's going to be a two-step process. Number one, we're going to have a very strict pre-qualification process for bidders in the first place, and number, a demonstrated work history that they're able to take on projects of this magnitude and this scope, and a proven track record, you know, with references, and I, I think that's number one on, to be preemptive and, and proactive on the front end. And on the second end, in the, in the contract documents, overs, you know, over, I don't want to say over-exaggerated, but very strenuous liquidated damages for failure to comply with, with interim milestones in the schedule. Now, that, that's something that, you know, instead of $1,000 a day, maybe it needs to be $10,000 a day, whatever the right, I'm just picking a number, but those will be very carefully written, and, you know, we would be having conversations with the city council to make sure that you guys are comfortable with, with how we have that structured, and that'd probably be a good conversation to have before we advertise.
Alderman Woods?
Absolutely. We talked about adding some things to that contract. I mean, the fact that the contractor can leave the job for six weeks, and even have the ability to ask for an extension, because he's still within the parameters, we need to tighten a lot of those issues, issues up, so that they feel the pain sooner, as opposed to, we're at the end now, it's winter, and somehow they still have time on the contract when they abandon the job technically, for six weeks.
Mayor?
Aaron, so you have Orchard Lakes over there. I know you're meeting with Georgetown, are you meeting with Orchard Lakes as well? Is that set?
It's, we're trying to reach out to, we haven't been able to contact them yet, but we're hoping to reach out to them as soon as tomorrow to get a date on the calendar with them as well.
Okay.
Some of this idea, you know, some of this idea with the temporary easements along there just came about in the last couple of days when we were starting to hit roadblocks with ComEd, and so we're very early in that process.
Always combat.
So, yeah, I have one question. So, back up with the money for this project, so the, the next phase, we're looking to do a bond issue. Is that the direction we look at, and how much is that bond issue?
Mayor?
Right, right.
This phase is the bond issue. We were talking $9 million, now the estimate's $12 million. And then he was saying, to stay with the, because we can only do so much on the bond issue, is that correct, Brad?
We, we would, we would have a couple of different choices, but one of the choices could even be, hey, during CIP discussions, we have a pot of money set aside for normal CIP projects, perhaps if we didn't want to finance anymore for one year, we may have to delay a project and take money out of the CIP for that.
Those tough decisions are coming, let me tell you.
Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so, what we had done in anticipation for this was, we had done the preliminary authorization ordinance for not to exceed 9.25 million. So, at this point, you know, the choices are effectively go back and redo that process to bump it up, postpone part of the project at Eastern Lake that you just said you didn't want to postpone, or try to rake up 3 million in cash out of the remaining CIP, which effectively would mean you do no other projects next year aside from this one project. So, that's pretty much where it's at, which would make January 9th pretty easy, but that's about where it's at, so.
So, we could go back and revisit a bond issue if we have to go higher, right? Because I'll, I'll tell you one thing, it's going to be very hard to sit up here and postpone a whole project, a whole entire city for $2 million out, I mean, I mean.
Mayor?
Brad, so, if you went back for the bond issue, how long does that take? Because that's going to take time, right?
Go ahead.
Sure. You know, if we were to do that, either the next meeting or the January meeting, it'd be done by February or March, pretty easily, when the timing with this would line up. So, we do the authorizing ordinance, and then do the newspaper posting, and then have another BINA hearing for that, so that's no more than probably two months to do that, and then.
Doesn't mess up the time, I, my concern is the timeline, the bidding, all that stuff.
Yeah, because we wouldn't start construction until weather breaks, so it'd be April, May, so, yeah, so no, it wouldn't really be an issue, just have to go through the process again, which isn't hard, it's just a matter of doing it.
The hearing and all that stuff.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, and that, that's the next bullet there, is obviously finally, finalizing financing. We will be ready to go by the end of January. If the city wants to have another month or something before we were to, or if we had delays in some of these easements, that, you know, there is certainly flexibility with it, obviously, we want to, we want to get to the early part of the construction season as best we can. And, and this is the other element that we touched on earlier, in terms of, we do want to make sure that we schedule meetings, or maybe there's a town hall type of a, a meeting that we can have with all the affected residents, and begin planning for that. And I think there's, there's, you know, there may be even value in, if there's to be one major meeting, maybe waiting until we know who our contractor is, in order to have that person involved and get their insight as to exact, you know, they'll probably have a little bit more ability to, to present a refined schedule and things along those lines. So, we might not necessarily have a, a major meeting like that until a few weeks before we would start construction, but there may also be, you know, other things, like newsletters, or maybe there's a website notice that, hey, this, this big project is coming, and that we're going to be reaching out, and I think that's a part of what we'll be getting together with staff here in the next, you know, few weeks to, to get some good ideas.
Alderman Wesley?
So, go back to this low-interest loan, so you're in the process of finalizing that paperwork?
The facilities plan, yes.
Okay. So, my question is, is there supposed to be, I, I can't remember what the treatment plan, do we have to put a price tag on it, how much we want to borrow on that?
Yes, there'll be cost estimates as part of the plan.
So, how are we going to determine that right now?
Well.
So, you're going to need our approval on how much to put out, out on that.
Well, and, and understand that this first phase that we're talking about with, with the bond, isn't going to be funded by the loan, so really, it'll be the estimates for Phase Two and Phase Three that will be in the, the loan estimates.
So, bottom line, how much is the loan estimate going to be for Phase Two and Three that you're putting down? Are we putting 21 million, or what are we putting?
Director Ling?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it sounds, just for clarity, that the council is in favor of incorporating that area between Dalewood and the ComEd easement with this next phase that is going to be bonded. So, if that is the consensus, that would help Aaron decide his phasing for this and what's going to be included in the IEPA loan proposal.
Mayor?
Actually, I was, I was going to ask, so, we've got a choice, I think we get it all done once, but I haven't heard from the other end on what you guys are thinking.
Move forward.
Go ahead.
All right.
We're all in agreement on this, huh?
Okay. We're, we're good to go.
Before we went any further, that's all. So, they want to get it done next year.
Go ahead.
We've come to the end.
Thank you very much. Vontage?
Well, I, if, if we go back to our overall project estimate, which was around 29 million, and if we're going to have the first 12 be out of the bond issue, the loan amount will be 17 somewhere in that, somewhere in that order of magnitude, between Phase Two and Phase Three?
Wasn't the 29 million with Squaw Creek and Dalewood and everything, or?
You know, I, I would need to check, but, you know, certainly, we can, we will share, we will share a draft copy with the city before it goes to IEPA.
Because, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, because once you put that money in... So, because once you put that money in and we add that with the treatment plan, once you put that money in, you can't go back there and say, I need another $2 million on that loan.
Well, and we probably want to put a little bit of contingency in there, especially knowing that some of these, some of that work wouldn't be bid until three or four years from now. And, you know, there'll be decisions. Do you want to include the engineering costs with it? Do you want to, you know, or do you not? You know, there's, those are discussions that we would have before we submit.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay, Aaron, good job.
Good job. Okay, so next is, we got approval of the final payments for Clark &amp; Deetz Engineering and Newcastle Electric, Inc. for the Potter Street Booster Station generator replacement in the amount, well, for the engineer, it's $805, and for the electric, Newcastle Electric, it's $16,919. That is my motion. Second. Okay. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. And next one is approval of agreement between the City of Wooddale and IHC Construction Companies LLC for the fiscal year ended 2020, Wooddale Road Excavation Sewer Repair in the amount not to exceed 25,000. That is my motion. Any questions? Any questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. And that's it. Then items to consider, future meetings? Do we have any? No, but we do have a few engineer standards that are coming up this winter and Elizabeth Drive Bridge, Phase One, coming up this winter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call the Finance Administration Committee to order first approval amendment September 12, 2019, Finance Administration.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, directions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, reporting recommendation, fiscal year 2019 audit report. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As required by law now, right? We're doing the annual audit presentation as we have the past number of years. We have Partner Anthony Servini here with us to go over some of the highlights of the audit itself. You know, just the high level, no issues with the audit this year. You know, I've been working with them for a number of years, so we know what they expect of us and they know who we are, so that's good. And with that, I guess I will turn it over to Mr. Servini and I will do my best to follow along with the PDF here as he goes through things.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Sikkich, we'd like to thank you for the invitation to be here this evening and present the results of our audit of the city as of and for your fiscal year ended April 30th, 2019. As a result of our audit, we've issued three documents, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, where I'll focus my presentation on this evening. We've also issued our auditor's communication to members of the city council and management, and finally, the separate report required for your TIF compliance report. We also have submitted the annual financial report required by the state comptroller that has been filed and submitted as well. Within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, if you'll turn with me to page Roman numeral three in the introductory section. Do want to commend the city for receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is a multi-layer review that the city's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report does go through, reviewed by members of GFOA Special Review Committee as well as members of GFOA staff to ensure all the required components of this Comprehensive Annual Financial Report are included and properly disclosed. I do want to commend you for receipt of that Certificate of Achievement. On the following page, page Roman numeral four, this is the city's letter of transmittal. Letter of transmittal, recommend reviewing this in conjunction with the management's discussion and analysis, which I'll cover in just a few moments. Letter of transmittal is the only component of this document where management can have that subjective discussion of what's going on, as well as taking a look at the future projects, future initiatives that you have before you on a regular basis and what the potential impact may be to the city from a financial standpoint. Turning past the rest of the pages then with the Roman numerals, in the first section of the, or you come to the financial section of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. First item there is the independent auditor's report. As always, management retains ultimate responsibility for the financial statements. Our responsibility as auditors is to issue an opinion on those financial statements. City was subject to two sets of standards that we had to follow this year, both generally accepted auditing standards as well as generally accepted government auditing standards. The second of those required, required because the city expended greater than $500,000 in a combination of federal and state funds, which triggered the requirement for that audit in accordance with the state's new Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, or GOT, requirements there. On the following page, you'll see the opinion section. Please to present, we've issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements as of and for your fiscal year ended April 30th, 2019. That clean, unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance we can provide, and it means that in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with those generally accepted accounting principles. So do again commend you for receipt of that unmodified opinion. On the next page, you'll see the separate report required in accordance with the generally accepted government auditing standards. This is the separate paragraph as noted here, the last sentence there, no issues in terms of our testing here, and that we do have a separate opinion included within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report related to those separate opinion requirements. The following page, you'll see the management's discussion and analysis, or page MDNA 1. If you're looking at nothing else within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, do look at the management's discussion and analysis. Includes key pieces of information required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board to be presented here, as well as management's explanation for why figures have changed from one year to the next. So a nice opportunity for management to provide that context on what happened during the course of the year and what drove some of those changes. From there, we'll turn past the rest of the pages with the MDNA page numbers. You're going to come to the Statement of Net Position, which is the first of the city's basic financial statements. The Statement of Net Position is presented on the Economic Resources Measurement Focus, intended to provide that long-term perspective on how the city is doing as a whole. Three columns here, your governmental activities, these are your tax-supported funds. Your business-type activities includes your water sewer, sanitation, commuter parking, and then your consolidated total column on the far right. The second line from the bottom of this page presents your unrestricted net position. For both the governmental activities and business-type activities, these amounts do remain in a deficit position. For governmental activities, that deficit is $10.5 million. Now, do take into account that there's two major components that are driving that deficit. GASB statement 68, which is applicable several years ago for the city, as well as GASB 75, which the city implemented last year. That's about $22.3 million of pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities that are factored into there. So that's what's driving the deficit in the governmental activities.
So, just so we're clear, that's strictly because if the city were to shut down today, we owe all that pension liability, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Your business-type activities, then again, your water sewer, commuter parking, and sanitation, your amounts associated with the IMRF net pension liability, as well as your other post-employment benefit liability, total about $1.1 million. So even after we factor those out, you still have about a $1 million deficit in your water and sewer fund, primarily driving that a little bit smaller in the commuter parking fund. But again, water sewer driving the majority of that there. Something, I know that discussion on water rates later on that, you know, generally an indication from an economic standpoint, when you have a deficit for a business-type activities fund there, that there is a structural imbalance happening there where you're not able to have the funds in place for the water and sewer fund to be able to fund both those capital and debt components to the operations there. Turning back two pages to page six, this is the second page of the Statement of Activities, your Long-Term Income Statement. For the year, your change in net position for your governmental activities had an increase of $1,366. Your business-type activities had a decrease of $386,000, so just under $1 million. It's under $1 million for your overall change in net position. On the next page, this is the balance sheet for your governmental funds. So these take out those long-term pension liabilities, more of a current financial resources focus here. Looking in the first column, the general fund column, your unassigned fund balance in the general fund as of April 30th was $6,677,619. City has a fund balance policy that requires that number to be 50 cent, 50% of your fiscal year budgeted expenditures, so you were in compliance with that policy as of April 30th. On page nine, your Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance for your governmental funds, your net change in fund balance, so again, the third line from the bottom here, your general fund had a drawdown on fund balance of $909,000 during fiscal year 19. Now, do look at the line right above that, you'll see that $912,000 of that was driven by transfers out, primarily going to your land acquisition fund, as well as your annual contribution to your capital equipment replacement fund there. So looking at the excess deficiency line above there, you'll see that really is a break-even year overall for the general fund before those transfers occurred. Capital Projects Fund, a net increase there of $1.2 million, driven by transfers in, as well as the loans that were issued there. Then your non-major governmental funds, $900,000 of increase there, several funds contributing to that increase. From there, the last two items I'll cover for you in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Turn to page 58. Our second.
Okay, our second, yeah. Which one?
Hammer, funded, so I'll keep going. I've got 20 pages left. One more. This is your Schedule of Changes in the city's net pension liability and related ratios, specifically for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, presented on a December 31st basis in accordance with IMRF's fiscal year end and the timing of IMRF's actuarial valuations. The last bolded line is the employers, your city's net pension liability. As of December 31st, 2018, that amount was $4.8 million, about an 85% funded ratio for IMRF as of December 31st, 2018. I think in terms of looking at the change from 2017 to 2018, you'd have about a 13% decrease in that funded ratio, really driven by two primary factors. As I believe everyone knows, the IMRF looked at the rate of return and reduced it from a 7.5% to a 7.25% rate of return there. That caused about a $900,000 increase in the total pension liability. And then in the Plan Fiduciary Net Position section, the very middle of the page, you'll see a line titled Net Investment Income. 2017, I think we spoke last year about high MRF, how IMRF had a phenomenal investment year in 2017. Wooddale's component of that increase was $4.2 million. 2018, particularly the 2018, December 2018 market, had a decrease of $1.4 million, so certainly gave some of that back there. Again, at the end of the day, an 85% funded ratio for a defined benefit pension plan, IMRF still continues to be, you know, the overall model from a funding standpoint there and very well funded for that standpoint. Looking then at the next page, it's the same presentation for the Police Pension Fund. This is on your April 30th year end, so the same measurement date as your fiscal year. Overall, slight decrease, about a half percent decrease from 57.1 to 56.6 this year, primarily driven by investment returns falling a little bit short of the assumed rate of return, which you can see a few pages back in the report. Page 61 shows the, it was two pages back. Page 61 would present, or sorry, the way. Presents the annual money-weighted rate of return for the fund for the past five fiscal years there. The actuary uses a 6.75% rate there, so they've been able to, you know, exceed that, you know, the investment manager exceeded that rate with the investments for 2017 and 2018, fell a little bit short in 2015, 2016, obviously had a negative return there, and then about two percentage points short on 2019. That concludes my comments on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are you making?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, approve it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Do we need a roll call?
No.
We'll do a roll call. We'll air around the side of questions.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, Master P Schedule Update. Mr. Wilson, how are you? Not bad whenever you're ready.
Sure.
Fair enough, yeah. So as you see, present of the packet, there was a request, I believe, from the council to kind of amend some of the onerous requirements for escrows for smaller, I believe it was flat work, so concrete work on residential properties. So what was put forth in that was to reduce that from $5,000 down to $1,000 for those? I can't get into it. It was presented in the packet, it was a redlined version of that. And so like I said, for the newer expanded area being less than 400 square feet, that would go from 5,000 down to 1,000, and then for resident, commercial, it would stay at the $5,000 price point for that.
Is that the only change?
Yes.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. That passes. Next, water rates. Who's going to take that? Mr. Wilson, you're going to handle that one, too?
Oh, sure.
Okay, nice. Do you have a motion down there?
All right. So, as we've discussed, past number of years, and I know the mayor alluded to it both last night and this afternoon, you know, that the rates, we have to adjust the rates, and unfortunately, it looks like they're going to have to be going up. So this first table we put in here, which was also first table in the memo, which is kind of a little bit of the rate history. And then I also added in, in the need column, need slash what was presented as the requested increase for that given fiscal year to keep pace with both the treatment plant debt payments and capital spending. You know, and while this was planned, you know, you'll see in the far right column, the first three years, that was just keeping pace with the DuPage Water Commission. That was when the city of Chicago came through and raised their effective rate by over 100%. So we kept pace with those. And then in 16, the presentations were to start to, you know, erode away, the rate increases needed for the debt payments while maintaining capital. And then you can see the need column, second from the right, and then what was passed in the second column from the left. So as you can see, in each of those columns, the, what was approved was less than what was recommended to be approved to keep pace with the debt payments and the capital payments. One of the driving factors of that, again, the mayor hit on this, and this is not unique to Wooddale, but as the rates increase, typically consumption goes down. And part of that is organic with, you know, low-flow toilets going in, you know, more effective shower heads, things of that nature. You know, and also people just conserving, because if their bills are going up, you're going to find ways to cut back. So maybe instead of a 10-minute shower, it becomes a five-minute shower, maybe a shower at the gym, maybe, you know, you do some different things in the house, washing dishes, whatnot. So, over the past number of years, yeah, there was that 31... So, over the past number of years, yeah, there was that thirty-one million gallon decrease that the mayor had referenced, and that was from here, from sixteen, down to here, three eighty-five. But if you go back even further, you can see that it's actually, you know, fifty-five in fifteen, so that's, what's that, seventy million gallons from fiscal two thousand thirteen down to nineteen. I believe if you go back to the high-water mark in two thousand and five, which granted, that is a significant time ago, I believe that was up around six hundred and ten million gallons of water that was consumed back in the mid-aughts. So definitely a significant decrease. And then as that consumption goes down, obviously that's generating less revenue for the fund, because it's all based on consumption, or predominantly all based upon consumption. And again, like I said, it's not unique to Wooddale. It is just human nature. It's like when gas prices went up, people drove less or bought more efficient cars. So this is the same, same phenomenon, just with the water bills.
Mr. Wesley?
So what is staff recommending to put us where we should be at to pay for the loan and everything else? What is your recommendation?
Mr. Wilson?
I mean, that's, I think, I think in two slides, so if you wanna work through the next two, then we can, yeah.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
So before I answer Alderman Wesley's question, there was that, that table, that rate model that was in the packet as well. So there were a few assumptions built into that. The assumptions were that there would be between one point three and one point five million in capital per year, consisting, you know, the INI, which we are required to do as part of the EPA loan for the treatment plant, basic water main replacement, it said mains, so water and/or sewer main replacement. Lift stations, I know we're embarking upon replacing the second lift station here soon, and then there's a kind of a schedule for the other ones. And then other, just, you know, general maintenance within the water and sewer system, the different treatment plants. You know, the south treatment plant, you may recall, there was a study that was gonna be about eight million, eight to nine million dollars to rehab south plant. So it assumed, putting approximately two million aside, it did scale a little bit between, you know, one and a half and two and a half, depending on which year you're talking about. Aside from that, to get up to that eight to ten million dollar price point in four to five years, to do it as one large project without issuing more debt, and then doing it at one time, you know, get some perhaps economies of scale, and do it as one contract instead of doing a bit here, a bit here, a bit there. And then also, there was an assumption on wage increases, commodities costs, things of that nature, just kind of consistent with what we've seen historically through the union contracts and the commodity price increases. So just kind of how this, this works, this larger, light bluish trapezoid here is your basic O and M costs. So your personnel costs, purchase of buying the water, vehicles, fuel, electric, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. This light green segment here is what we have plugged in as known capital costs or estimated capital costs. That's the INI, the lift stations, things of that nature. This, this one here that significantly spikes here, this is the south treatment plant and the costs associated with that. And this top bluish-purpleish segment, that is the debt service payments. And it does, just, you know, they're, they're static through here, but it does spike just because of the south treatment plant. The red dotted line is the stated cash reserve policy that we have. The black dotted line is the cash reserve policy with capital, a little bit of a reserve for capital. And then the solid black line is cash position. So as you can see, in twenty-one, twenty-two, and part of twenty-three, and this is with the assumptions and the rates on the next page, what the projected cash position is for the water and sewer fund going forward. And then it does get back into the black, and then it does, and then it moderates close to that black dotted line, which theoretically is where you probably wanna be. So with those assumptions built in, and then trying to get to the, to the dotted line. And just for the record, that if we change the assumptions, you know, with the south plant or some of the other capital spending, that those rates could change, but to do everything that was on the assumptions page and keep things going, these would be the rate increases required to have that chart on the previous page come to fruition. All things being equal, which is assuming that consumption is consistent, which history shows that it perhaps might not be. So we'd obviously have to revisit this, but that's, that's what the model is spitting out at this time.
Mayor, please.
Brad, so the number you're showing there for fiscal twenty-one, that's strictly to the variable per thousand gallons, correct?
Mr. Wilson?
That is correct.
So if we did a modified, some on the fixed cost and some on the variable, that could be a little different number, but still get to the same, right? So, honestly, I know I sat with you a good hour today and had plenty of conversations. And we threw out a couple of things like four dollars fixed cost on the sewer, two dollars fixed cost on the water, and then two dollars on the variable. And you said that would definitely help the situation, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Wilson?
Just correct, yeah.
Does, I'll ask one. Yes, go ahead. So does that get us to that same number, or are we less than that number, the number you're, the three seventy-one? Changing those numbers around, is the mayor just iterated?
Yes, I apologize, we talked to a lot of different numbers, so what was the mix?
Four on the sewer fixed cost, two on the water fixed cost, and then two dollars on the variation.
Of the sewer?
On the sewer, variable.
Sure, so that's probably seventy-five percent.
That's, that's still not, really?
Alderman Sizmarzki, do you have a question?
You said the scale says that this is the way, you have to go to two and a half, two and a half, five, twenty? Or is there another, is there any other kind of combination of numbers you go to? I mean, does it have to be three seventy-one for fiscal year one?
Mr. Wilson?
Could it be two across the board? Like we do pensions and contracts?
So, so I guess theoretically, sure. But, you know, to kind of, to get the fund going back into the black, then, you know, what would have to get cut would be some capital projects going forward. Because, you know, there's, and I know in the memo I did put the, the more of a fixed cost model in there. Because there's a cost associated with operating the fund, regardless of how much water anybody uses. And so what really the, the completely variable nature of the rate model is doing is saying, okay, we're basing it to cover all of this, but if people start using less water, consumption goes down, then there has to be, for lack of a better phrase, like a sacrificial lamb, if there's not enough money, which is gonna be capital. Or I guess theoretically, you know, because it can't be the debt payments, it can't be the purchase of the water, can't be the electric and the energy to run the treatment plant. So there's really only two places you could go, and capital's probably the more palatable of the two choices at that point. So theoretically, it, it could change around. I mean, I ran quite a few different models, but with what we know is coming up later this year and next year, it's tough to dig out in, within the next three to five years without having, unfortunately, one of these kind of whale numbers in the first couple of years.
So let me, I'll ask it. So what if we went to, I know you said the other numbers were about seventy-five percent of where we needed to be. If we went four fixed water, four fixed sewer, two variable sewer?
Good.
So just, so kind of the way that I, you can look at it is, for every, it's about a quarter of the variable cost is a hundred thousand dollars. So if you kind of take that three seventy-one and break it into twenty-five cent increments, you're at fifteen, you're at fifteen units. Every approximately dollar sixty-five on the fixed cost is equivalent to a quarter on the variable cost. So every dollar sixty-five is effectively one unit of fixed cost versus the quarter of the variable. So, you know, getting to the eight fixed cost, so was that three, four, so that's about four and a half? Five units, and then the two dollars is eight units, so you're about thirteen versus the fifteen that's in there, so it's...
So we're, right now, we're like thirteen versus fifteen, so...
Yeah, and, and one point to make, that on the sewer side, because there are the, the multipliers for the businesses and the food services.
Right.
If the, if the two dollars were to be on the sewer, that would probably, with those extra multipliers on there, that would probably be pretty close if it were indeed on the sewer side, so that would be pretty close.
Alright, excellent, thank you. Alderman Sizmarzki, a question?
Yeah, I mean, we sit here, year after year, this board, majority of this board, almost all of this board, has sit here and tried to play devil's advocate, I don't wanna raise water rates, I don't, it's evil, it's evil. We taking money from the gaming machines, we tried fixing that, we tried to, you know, this town needs a lot of work. We, we need to pull our bootstraps up and just cover this cost. It needs to be done. I don't know, you know, just get it done. I, I don't care who makes the motion, somebody needs to pass it. We sit here and we try to figure out how to, how to keep it the lowest without operating cost, but there's an operating cost to everything. Like you said, the numbers don't lie. We, we've tried to accommodate everybody, so...
Do you wanna?
I've been, I've been doing some math. So Brad, so if we go to seven dollars on the fixed cost of the sewer and two dollars on the water, and then two dollars on the rate, I think that gets you where you wanna be, right? Yes?
Pretty much.
So seven fixed cost sewer? Or do we need to go to eight?
No, I think...
Seven and two, right?
I think the four, two, and four gets us pretty close as far as...
We need to cover...
Yeah, that's why I went to seven on the sewer side.
Right, well...
On the fixed cost, and two on the water.
You're adding them already when you're saying seven, not adding seven, right?
No.
You're adding four to make it seven.
No, 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 no.
You're adding seven...
No, because at four, adding four, he still says we're way short, right? Is that, is that, did I understand that right? So it should be seven, adding seven. Plus, plus the two dollars on the water, that's nine dollars of fixed cost, and then still the two dollars to the variable rate per thousand.
So you're saying seven to the fixed side of the sewer?
And then two.
Two to the variable side of the sewer?
No, no. Oh, yeah, yeah, two to, and then two to the fixed cost on the water.
And then two to the fixed side of the...
Well, if we're going by what Brad is saying, because even at, at the first thing we mentioned was four, two, and two, and you mentioned four, four, and two.
So is that...
It's four, two, and two.
No, it's nine dollars of fixed cost between water and sewer, seven on the sewer and two on the water.
Right.
And then two dollars on the rate.
So does that get us, so what's our, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I think with, like I said, with the, the multipliers on the commercial, industrial, and food service, I think, yeah, that's, I mean, few cents, you know, either way, but yeah, I think that's pretty, pretty close, yeah. Again, all things being...
But, no, it's nine, so it's nine dollars fixed cost. The two dollars is then, honestly, on the rate, so if a normal home is using five thousand gallons, that's another ten dollars.
So what's the bottom line?
Well, I would...
So, so to recap, we're gonna add seven to the fixed side of sewer.
Right.
Two to the variable side of sewer. And four to the fixed side?
No, two, I thought.
Two to the fixed side of what?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Question, Alderman Jacob?
Does, Brad, Mr. Wilson, does all this take into the account the big water project that we're about to take on?
Mr. Wilson?
Did your model here take that into account?
Are you speaking of the stormwater project?
Yeah.
That's a different funding source, so, I mean, so...
Mayor, please.
Yeah, no, this is the treatment plant plus water projects we have throughout town. Different fund.
Alderman Catalana?
Yeah, with all the future construction that's going on, I'm sure that the water usage is gonna go up eventually, I'm sure. Have we looked in sunset clause?
Well, we have, many years ago, right, we took it off autopilot, and we revisit this every year. We have this painful conversation, so maybe one day, to your point, in the not-too-distant future, maybe next year's conversation, actually, it'd probably be two years based on the construction schedules. In two years, the conversation might be a more blissful conversation whereby we could reduce that number. But given the track record, I think that Brad Buttigieg and the mayor touched on at the, at the meeting last night, was that the, the use, even given that, is going down. So we're, we're bringing on stuff, and the, the use is still being reduced, given what we're bringing on. Correct, Mr. Wilson?
Correct.
Then, then that's a negative.
Right.
And, and with the use going down, is it, does that, as far as our infrastructure, our treatment plant, is that using less resources? I mean, are we saving money because the use is going down? I know, we're not saving, but as, as far as operating costs.
Mr. Wilson?
Not really, no. Because, so really, the only thing that's changing the cost of the system, for the actual cost of the system, is the cost of the water. So I mean, the water mains still cost the same, you know, the electric is still the same. So I mean, maybe a little bit of electric on the pumping side, but, you know, I mean, the, the facilities still have, you know, they still have to run and, and everything else, so there's not, not a huge operational savings for, relative to the reduction of, of water, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, essentially, that plant's running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, whether it runs a thousand gallons through or ten thousand gallons through.
Right.
The incremental difference in electric, or where I'm terrible, and it's gonna get... Alderman Wesley, did you have a question?
Well, keep in mind, guys, we also got paid for maintenance of the electric plant down at Rock's Hall. We've been kicking this down the line.
That's coming up shortly, so we have...
Two more in this segment.
Alderman Jacob?
Your model was keep it, that the usage is gonna remain the same, because by us raising it, it's gonna go...
Mr. Wilson?
It actually did assume a moderate decrease per year, based upon the fact that that's what history's kind of proven out over the last five to six years. So we did include that in the, in the rate model.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the city manager, because I respect your opinion and value it. With the numbers that you've heard this evening, would, are you comfortable with those numbers on the motion that's been made here?
Mr. Marv...
I'll just say in theory that I believe we're moving in the right direction as far as not relying so heavily on a variable structure and moving more towards a fixed structure, because as Finance Director Wilson has pointed out, consumption goes down, and then that throws off all of our numbers. So moving towards these larger increases and more reliance on the fixed fees will make us more structurally sound moving forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, please.
And just for those residents who weren't at the shape of Wooddale last night, so basically, we're, we're using, the city is using thirty-one million gallons... we're, we're using, the city is using 31 million gallons less of water per year, and the last three years, basically, just those three years, basically cost us, at 31 million gallons less, was $575,000 less money into the fund, so over three years, that's $1.8 million shortfall. Unfortunately, if we're going to take care, keep things the way they're operating and do them right, this has to be done.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, items to be considered at future... Mr. Wilson? Mr. Murmas, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Murmas?
I know the vote was just taken, we just wanted to make, wanted, if Ms. Schultz could read the motion that was made, so that...
Seven, two, and two.
10% of the fixed cost, two and two.
Seven, seven on the sewer fixed.
Sewer fixed, seven.
Two on the water fixed, and then two dollar variable.
Good? Mr. Murmas, anything else? No, so, alright, thank you. Items to be considered at future meetings, exciting property casualty insurance, December 12th, that'll be coming up, and CIP, January 9th, that one actually is exciting. Mr. Murmas?
I will note that the CIP meeting and then the subsequent budget meeting this year, we're going to go back to the seven o'clock start time on that, so we can have a, a longer discussion time.
Are we serving hors d'oeuvres?
We're, we're going to have maybe some pizza, pizza beforehand, so we all are full to make better decisions. So 7:00 PM start time for that.
Carb them up, put them to sleep, nice.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose for adjournment.